Twenty-first, 2014 City Commission meeting to order for the invocation. Our minister is not here tonight, so I will lead us in that then. So if you guys would bow your heads. "Lord be with us here tonight as we make decisions that affect every citizen in our community. Help us to remember we represent the young and the old, the rich and the poor, the healthy and the disabled. Help us to listen to our fellow citizens and do our best for our community. We do appreciate the blessings you have bestowed on El Dorado. Help us work together on our challenges that are before us in the future. Help us to be fair and honest in our dealings. In God's name, amen."
Amen.
Okay, now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any proclamations this evening, so we will move into personal appearances. We have a couple of them. First of all, we have a lady here from El Dorado Main Street talking about Frontier Western Days.
Ann Broderick.
Broderick, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Broderick being 300 South Main, apartment three, from El Dorado, here representing El Dorado Main Street as well as Frontier Western Celebration. First and foremost, the event cannot happen for the seven years without the commission's support and the city's support. So I just want to say thank you to you all for making sure the event does happen. I also want to say thank you to the city staff and also Herb for making sure things do happen. As you know, we're a week, week and a half away from the big events. Friday night, we're going to have the Bull Ride as usual, and Logan Myers, or excuse me, Whiskey River is going to kick off the concert that night. Saturday, we'll have the parade as well, and the events down at the Butler County History Museum as well. And Bull Ride, and the championship Bull Ride that night. And Logan Myers will present the concert that night as well. And then Sunday, we'll do Cowboy Church there at the Civic Center inside the building, and barrel racing, and ranch rodeo. So again, none of this would happen without our great sponsors, the great sponsor of the city, so we do appreciate that. And I'd also like to present each commissioner with some passes as well to make sure we hope to see you all in attendance as well for the weekend. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Broderick.
Logan Myers is going to be awesome.
She's welcome.
Okay, why don't you go see that?
And Whiskey River.
And Whiskey River.
Yes.
Never seen them, but I know Logan Myers is awesome.
And also from previous years, just there have been some things that have happened in some previous years. And we as a committee and also as the board from Main Street have, we feel we're taking some necessary precautions this year, so hopefully things will not happen in the events that they have from previous years. If you have any questions?
We're working closely with the police department, so we're very appreciative of them.
You might repeat that, Broderick, because they won't hear you.
We are working with the police department. We have also hired some outside security as well, professional security companies, so that way things will take place that they need to take place as well.
Okay.
Thanks for all your hard work on that, Broderick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Don't think I have any.
I'm excited, I think it's going to be great.
It's going to be a rockin' festival pageant on Thursday night.
Oh, thank you, Chase.
Don't forget that.
Totally forgot, El Dorado Middle School, the old El Dorado Middle School, and the pageant, as well as sponsored ice cream social as well.
Could I have your cellphone number? I was wanting to visit with you about something tomorrow, not even tonight, if we could.
I'll pass along here after work's over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Broderick.
We got Lindsay Mills from Numana.
Hello. It was about five years ago that hundreds of volunteers packed the Civic Center here in El Dorado, and they packaged thousands of meals that eventually made their way to Haiti. That was the very first packaging event for Numana. Since then, in the last five years, we have done over 30 million meals, almost 200 events across the country. So we are so appreciative of the support that we've gotten from this community, from the city, and we want to celebrate with you all and invite you out to a big open house out of the Numana headquarters, which is out by the Holiday Inn. We're going to be having a big open house hot dog feed and packaging event on August 9th. Also, we're going to have a ribbon cutting on the 7th to celebrate our new building. We have built a packaging facility. This is something we've talked about for years, instead of us traveling to other communities, that we now have the option of bringing them to us. This is great for small groups, schools, and such, so that they can come and package food in our facility, learn more about what Numana is doing, and see the headquarters there. We also have a new commercial kitchen. That kitchen is going to allow us to process food that is grown in the garden, the Numana Gardens on Gordy Street. We're able to can it and dehydrate it to give to our feeding partners, and they won't have to worry about getting that distributed before it spoils. So with this kitchen, we're hoping to be able to grow even more food and process it and make a bigger impact on our local feeding partners here in El Dorado, in Butler County. So we just want to make sure that you guys were all aware of the big party we're going to have on the 9th, and be sure to come out, whether it's just to get a hot dog or spend a couple hours packaging food with us. It's going to be from 11 to 3, and that's a Saturday. And then again, the ribbon cutting is going to be on the 7th over the noon hour with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, we're ready for, there's a third one, isn't there? The library's here to give us an update, so Mr. Coburn, if you could come forward, we'd be interested in hearing from you.
I got a crew.
You got a crew, good.
They look dangerous. Dangerous crew.
Kristi's going to be up.
I was just going to start with giving an update at how things are going at the opening. Kristi Jacobs, 1275 South Apica here in El Dorado.
Thank you.
Summer is a really busy time down at the library. We have summer reading going on. This year, we had 320 kids sign up so far. We have two weeks left. We had over 550 people come to the children's programming just in June. That doesn't count anything we've done in July. We have the same amount of programs in July. We had over 15,000 items circulated in June, which is up by about 800 from last year, so we're pretty excited about that. So it's just, it's been really busy down there, and we currently have about 14,000 registered patrons, so we're staying busy. Our patron count was about, I don't remember, about 8,000 that came through the doors in June.
That's great. That is great.
Bill Coburn, 1770 Country Club Rodeo Unit 2. And as most of you know, I'm a current library board member and also heading up our fundraising task force. I thought we'd give a little update on the project, our renovation project that I've talked to the commission before. Basically, our project, as most of you know, is a $1.3 million project, contains a number of improvements both inside the library and on the exterior. It's also to be done a couple of phases. It's a partnership with public funds and private funds that we're, we are working on the fundraising part of that, that I'll talk about here in a second. Our fundraising goal at this point is about a bit over a half million dollars, and we have a very hardworking and very active task force that meets so weekly and has been putting a lot of work into the fundraising part of that. Probably hasn't been as, quite as public as it will be getting here shortly, and I'll talk about that in a second. Even though we haven't been very public, we have raised, I think our number is $68,800 so far, and we think we're well on track to meet our goals. The, basically, where we are in the fundraising process is we're about to go public in the sense that we'll be asking citizens of El Dorado to help us with that. We have a, basically, a direct mail campaign that's going out to most of the households in the city here in the next couple of weeks. So we ask the citizens, when you see an envelope with our new logo from the Bradford Library, to please look at it and please read the information on there, and hopefully act favorably, help us with our library project. A lot of information will be in that packet as well. We're also, have begun or in the process of contacting some of our major donors, our businesses in town, to help that process. We've already started that, and we'll be continuing with that process. So again, we're doing a lot of different things. We're working with some foundation grants and so on, a lot of stuff going on at the same time. So that's a lot of stuff that's going on. We actually have been working with our architects, as you probably remember, we're working with PK, PK LHS, and met with them, met in fact, and going to start taking some bids, and we hope to start phase one of our project in mid to late October. So that's very exciting news for us, and again, a lot of work has gone into that by our board and our task force. I'd like to turn it over to our new library board president, Nancy Wagner, who will tell you about a couple of events that are going on.
Hi, Nancy Wagner, 1025 Rim Rock Road, and I'm the current president of the library board, and just wanted to let you know a couple of opportunities that you have to support the library and the donations. This coming Wednesday night, we have the Broncos game that we are sponsoring, and so we encourage people to come out and cheer on the Broncos, but also we will have some items to give away for people that are donating and just kind of promoting our library renovation. On August 7th, it's a Thursday, we are very fortunate that Scooters, Dilly Deli, Suite 120, and Beyond Napa have agreed to give us 10% of their profits that day, so that's a day that the teachers are back in school for in-service, and so I just encourage anybody that would like to help sponsor the library to go visit those four stores. We really appreciate their support in that, and just look for some different opportunities throughout the next coming months to support us. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you. Yes, at this point, I'd sure like to add that this, no question about, is a great cause, and the Bradford Memorial Library is a cornerstone to our community. I'm proud of the board and the task force, the efforts they've been putting into that, so I've been seeing that, and I say thank you from the community standpoint. So I'm hoping that the community can get behind us when this opens up, it needs to, and appreciate the downtown merchants doing what they're doing in that program, so that's two good reasons why we'll be supporting the local businesses and also supporting our library. So please remember August 7th, what Nancy, okay? Anybody want to add anything to that?
I'll second what Mike said. Thanks for all you guys do in the community, and I've heard a lot of good things. I know there's a lot of people excited about the project. Nick's daughter pointed out to me the other day, she drove by there, and she said it was nice to see the parking lot full and just a lot of people in and out of the building, and so congratulations and keep up the good work.
And I'll echo that and say there is a lot of excitement, I think, in the community, I know up here, for this project to get kicked off and get rolling in each phase. Each phase is going to be neat to see, you know, kind of come to fruition, so thanks for what you guys do and the board and everybody involved. Hopefully, the whole community can get behind this, so.
I'm in the library probably once a week, and it, I'm excited about it. Is there, is the parking lot going to be expanded at all? That better be good, because it seems like, I usually park on the street, because I drive a big long vehicle, and it's tough to get in and out of there, but I think, I think it's great, because especially that computer lab, every time I'm in there, every station's occupied, and it seems like there's a waiting line, so.
I think it's the number, this parking lot is the number one thing on our list. It needs a.
I don't have a problem parking in the street, but there's probably people that would rather not, so that's great.
I want to thank everybody for all their hard work and the work coming up, and I'm hoping to make a small contribution myself, as a, not downtown business, but a West Central one.
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number one, which is public comments. If you have anybody that would like to come forward and address the commission, this is your opportunity right now on any kind of city issues. Okay, if not, we'll close public comments, and we're ready for agenda item number two, which is the consent agenda. You guys got any questions on that?
So on the consent agenda today is the commission minutes from July 7th, and then it's standard CMB license for Western, Frontier Western Days. Pretty straightforward. Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda is presented and be approved.
Second.
I've got a motion in two seconds, so Tab, you can take your pick. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number three, which is the Federal Fund Exchange Program, intersection of Sixth and Haverhill.
Yes, Mayor. This evening, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with the City of El Dorado and the Kansas Department of Transportation for utilizing the City of El Dorado's federal fund exchange dollars for improvements at the intersection of Sixth and Haverhill. I spoke about this project a little bit in the past. We're just now getting this agreement back. It is our goal to get signals put up at this intersection. This funding from KDOT will allow the city to put up traffic signals at that intersection. After studying it, it has become very apparent, it's needed. As that industrial park area has grown and continues to grow, it'll be needed on into the future. We've looked at a phased approach to that intersection, and if you all remember in the CIP, we discussed a project about widening the, adding turn lanes to that intersection in the future, but currently, right now, we're looking at just the signals. Plans are completed on the signals. Public Works has procured pricing on all of the equipment and poles, so waiting on getting this agreement back, and we're really anticipating those things being up this fall.
So this phase of the intersection work that we're doing, just to put the signals in, you're designing that to set the, to set the poles back far enough so that if you do come in later, we decide to come in later and do the intersection improvement, then we won't have to make changes to those signals.
Yes, sir. It'll culminate the extra lane width in the future.
You know, I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people that work out in the industrial park and that live out on that side of town as well, and there's a lot of traffic, a lot more traffic there than there used to be, which is great. I mean, our industrial park's doing what it's supposed to do, so I've been a supporter of doing this work there from the beginning, and I think that it's important to note that you guys are planning for the future and that we're, you know, we're setting it up so that if we do get to the point where we can expand that intersection, then we're not going to have to tear down and start over.
Any other comments?
Will those lights, will they run consistently? I mean, and forgive me if I sound like an idiot, but on like, a normal consistent schedule? Or they run, will they be more active, I should say, in the morning, 5 o'clock, lunch hours?
Initially.
I go down, and I totally think they're needed at those certain times throughout the day when it is incredibly busy, but then there's points in the day when it's almost...
There could be times, if after review and them being up, that during the evening hours, they could function like Tuanda and Haverhill, where they're flashing yellow, flashing red. But during the days when they're mostly needed there with them, especially when Pioneer Balloon Shift is getting over, there's a lot of cars. Valmont's getting constant deliveries in and out. You have BG and Barton shipping hazardous materials, so it'll add to the safety and add to the ease of the traffic flow as well. But something we would look into, if we see a problem, we could obviously make that adjustment.
But Chase, it's kind of, I think the rest, everyone else probably heard me say this before, but signals as a general rule, you want them, you don't want them to do different things because motors get confused. And so even like, Tuanda's a great example. Actually, downtown, we turn off, we flash a lot of our signals after 9, 10, 11.
10 o'clock.
Because, to your point, there's not much traffic. Most of us go to bed, and so I anticipate that'll happen here, but during the day, they'll be on signals, and so Sixth, I guess, is going to be the normal on, and it'll take traffic off of Wool Hill.
Haverhill.
Haverhill, to flip it. And so like, most of the time on Sixth Street, you'll have a green light unless there's traffic coming on, and then it'll, a camera will be there, and it'll trip it.
Well, I think it'll be great too, because it'll slow people down, because I bet every morning, or it seems like most people are going well over 40 coming over that hill.
And I think the speed limit there's 35.
I mean, I think something, that seems like a pretty, it'd be a good break there.
Maybe one other thing to note that, to mention about, the city was able to receive some funding from KDOT as well for sometime in the spring, look for crossbucks to be installed at the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing at Haverhill with flashing warning beacons, beacons in the crossbucks to go to protect that railroad crossing.
So there will be an arm?
There will be an armed crossing there.
And I guess, and I'd mention too, we had talked about internally the thought that somewhere on West Sixth, there needed to be a signal to break up speed. And we really, I mean, we hadn't come to a consensus, and the motivation to really get busy was from the industries out there. BG talked to us, and Barton maybe, and so we had.
Valmont.
And Valmont, and so you had, it was those interactions with those businesses that said, we need this, and that's, so it's trying to be hearing our employers and trying to meet their needs in that. That was a big part of this as well.
Couple of questions I had when I was reading what you have here. It says trade all or portion of the federal funds allocations in a specific federal fiscal year. Where is the federal fund currently allocated? You know, if we got this money, where's it allocated to right now? How much is the total dollar amount that we have?
That $137,884 is a total. That is 95% of what would be considered the City of El Dorado's allotment. The federal highway bill, they look at population based on what state you live in, and the state has shipped that much money based on population. What had occurred forever was the Kansas Department of Transportation held all those dollars, and the City of El Dorado was able to be, get on a five-year plan to request projects. And going back in history and talking to some of the longtime employees, they were unaware of the El Dorado even being granted any of those projects. So this is a lot more beneficial program, where we're actually getting those dollars in our hand, making those improvements. Since this program has been functioning, we've made the improvements at the intersection of Vine and Central at no cost to the City of El Dorado. They were all federal funds. We were able to complete sidewalk improvements on Haverhill Road up North Main, and there's been some various other ones I can't think of, but really, the City of El Dorado is ever able to use that, that federal money every year, any way we see fit, as long as it relates somehow to transportation in the City of El Dorado.
And maybe a little more background, Mayor. This, this new program came into being about three years ago or four, but, and don't we annually put something in front of the commission saying they elect to do it again, or?
Yeah, this, they had in front of them the request for a project. We made the request, now the agreement's coming back before for authorization.
Right. And so you'll see this discussion.
Could this same money have been used like on Arthur and Central?
Yes, and maybe a little update on that as well. We did, we did get a grant as well to have KDOT study that corridor of Central and look at the traffic volumes and look at the signal warrants. That study's underway. KDOT hired a consultant to do that work, so they're still out in the gathering data phase of that project.
I know going to work in the morning, come home in the evening, I've been watching that corner very carefully. Very seldom do I see any vehicles coming out of there, but there's a lot of traffic on Sixth Street. Now, if we're going to do this, would there be any merit to having a camera activated? You know, somebody pulls up to that from the industrial park?
This will be camera activated.
It will be activated, okay. Because I'm afraid, I can see in the morning having 10, 15 cars piled up with nobody sitting at the intersection coming out of the industrial park.
Yeah, that's what Herb just said. It'll be, Sixth Street will be the standard open, and then the cameras activated on that road.
And I can't imagine, Mayor, that we'd ever put in an intersection, a signalized intersection, without cameras or cameras and loops. We're not going to, I can't imagine it.
Not on, not on, not on a street with that much traffic volume, and really, we wouldn't have a reason to put in one anywhere else.
Right, that's it. I mean, you know, if you put one on post and lawndale or whatever, yeah, you may not need cameras there, but there's really no sense in putting a signal there.
So for what it's worth, we're not intending to put in a traffic signal on post and lawndale. Just wanted to clarify.
Nor a stop sign, so yeah.
Is there one? It's unsignaled. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? No, I don't entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute for and on behalf of the City of El Dorado Agreement Number 438-14 between the City and the Kansas Department of Transportation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Is that something that I signed, Tab? It says authorize the city manager. Herb signing this, or am I signing this?
Typically, these forms, the city manager, you all authorize the city manager to enter into those agreements.
Okay. Now, I didn't, I didn't know if that was in the stuff you gave me, Tab.
No, I think that's a different.
Different deal, okay.
Thing.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, agenda item number four, Advisory Board Renewals and New Member Appointments.
This was something that you all considered at the beginning of your work session last week, and if I remember right, oh, they list all your new appointments. Most are youth commissioners, and then Larry, Dr. Schank is air... Most are youth commissioners and then Larry, Dr. Shank is airport advisory board.
Well, we're excited to have a lot of young people eager to be in the youth commission. And I appreciate you all being flexible and letting us change those bylaws to kind of have some more flexibility with recruiting these kids. And excited to have another year with them.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the advisory board member reappointments and new member appointments, especially right here with him.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Dr. Shank, does he live here in town?
I don't remember.
He does live here.
They're saying yes.
Okay, that's one I need to know. Okay?
I think he lives there.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, ready for Agenda Item Number Five, which is Neighborhood Revitalization Program Overview.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner, I just wanted to give a brief little overview of our NRP program, Neighborhood Revitalization Program. City of El Dorado adopted a plan for targeted neighborhood revitalization in nineteen ninety-seven. That's been modified over the years, five times, and brought back to you for reconsideration. Kind of one of the reasons we wanna start discussing about this with you all tonight and talking about it is our plan is set to sunset on December thirty-first of this year. So it's time to get to work on discussing if we want any changes or getting out there with those other taxing entities and discussing our plan and trying to garner some support from them as well. Sorry, I don't know why this, this is quicker. Just a few highlights of our current program. It applies both to residential and commercial rehabilitation as well as new construction. In residential, there is a ten-year, ninety-five percent tax rebate in designated areas. So I'll get to a map a little later on in the presentation of the city commission as designated targeted zone revitalization. And homes in those areas are eligible for a ten-year rebate. We also have a five-year rebate citywide on any residential project as well. That was added in two thousand eleven as part of kind of stimulus to see some, see if we can get some, how it starts going. Commercial is in designated areas or needs to be considered a dilapidated structure or a blemished neighborhood or something of that nature. Ahead on the ninety-five percent rebate, the minimum for residential is a five thousand dollar improvement up to a maximum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Commercial has a minimum of ten thousand dollars within the designated area, blighted area, dilapidated structure, or must be qualified by the City of El Dorado. And that, what we mean by that is that utilizes an initiative sometimes for economic development in blighted areas or areas that need growth. And the program, once it's in, it stays with the property, it does not stay with the owner. One thing we run into on occasion is taxes need to be paid in full every year and on time. If they aren't paid on time, then they can be removed from the program. We need to have an application in our office, the engineering department, prior to any work begin, beginning as well as, as well as us accepting that application.
And can I butt in real quick? On the first bullet, maybe a little more explanation on that. If you do not pay in full on time, the county will automatically take you out of the program. The county, historically, if the city does object, will put you back in at once, but you, but they will not do it a second time. So you're allowed one story and, and I've listened, I've listened to lots of them. And, you know, things happen. And so it's never just, I misplaced my tax bill. It's always, there's always a story, just like everything. And so that's the, that's the longer version of the bullet.
Glad you had that. Maintenance improvements do not add to values, they do not qualify. So a new roof, painting, new siding, windows, that sort of thing. No phased-in improvements, so no constructing one portion next year, adding another phase to your project. Quickly get to the map. We have seven areas which are in the designated neighborhood revitalization zone. That's one thing we'd like to consider, like maybe the commission to look at. There is an ad hoc committee that has met the pass. Suggestion would probably be that the housing, housing committee through INC in the City of El Dorado possibly could serve in that manner if so desired. But those are the targeted neighborhoods eligible for the ten-year abatement. Just tonight's discussing. I think in August, prior to the first meeting in August, we'll get you our current plan. Have, have the time for you all to make comments and then as well review it at a meeting. Looking for sometime in September to adopt some sort of formal plan. And that leaves us up to September, October, November to meet with the other taxing entities, both school districts, Butler County and the community college. Does each one of those entities want to sign a resolution or enter into an interlocal agreement, agreeing to abate their portion of the taxes as well?
To this point, that's happened every time.
There's been some change, they've said no on some deals here in last year though, haven't they?
That's true, in other jurisdictions and even, in even other jurisdictions. Part of the discussion around the county has, has kind of been with, with some cities, it's become political, NRP. And it's one of those government handouts. And so if you're very conservative and you don't think the government should be in the economic development business, you, you would probably oppose this program. And, and I think that's where the pushback in, and I think Rose Hill's taken it out, I think Andover has. And so, and the last time Andover did it, Andover had the biggest giveaway of any city in Butler County.
I, I think ours is the most, well, ours, El Dorado's has been around for longest. I think we were the first in the county to adopt the plan. Ours has limits, definitely on residential. Commercial's more focused on the designated areas except if it's economic development and they can prove in a model that they meet those needs of that.
And so I think you, there is discussion, there has been, there has been not as, there have been entities that dropped it. There's been other taxing entities that haven't supported it. I think El Dorado was the first to change theirs. And I think I was kind of spearheaded by you two who saw a lot of tradesmen not working and a lot of, and we went from twenty-five or thirty houses to none.
And I'll get to a slide here shortly, didn't mean to catch you off. We went back to two thousand four to kind of look at some numbers of, of the number of participants in the program. These, these are the number of properties in the City of El Dorado. So a little over sixty in two thousand four. And currently, we're at a hundred and seventeen properties that are receiving the rebate or in the neighborhood revitalization plan in the City of El Dorado. This is, this is a really interesting slide. When you look at the appraised value of the improvements. Now, this is just the improvements. So if there was an addition made to a house or, or remodel in a downtown building, this is just the value of those improvements. We're upwards, we were up, at upwards of twelve million dollars. It's starting to go down to eleven million four hundred, four hundred thousand now. But kind of the, the beauty of that is as new developments come in, ones that have been on there are getting off and starting to pay taxes, you see some pretty significant projects in the core downtown area that are, have gotten off the ten-year period. They're starting to pay taxes now. Plus they improved, improved part of downtown. This is the amount that's rebated every year by entities in the City of El Dorado. So this dollar amount includes the junior college, Butler County, USD three seven five and four ninety. And pretty close to two hundred thousand dollars annually. It goes a little up and down, but that is the amount of tax that is rebated to those owners. And this was the slide Herb was talking about, building permits and kind of why we added that in two thousand eleven, the new home construction anywhere for five years. You look back in oh-six and seven and even prior to oh-six, it was pretty consistent, thirty new home permits a year. And that number has dwindled down and is still not improving very much. So today, we're only at four new homes, new homes in El Dorado. Kind of think that five-year abatement is, is kind of essential to keep residential development going. But it did show an improvement pretty immediate in two thousand eleven where we had zero. Well, two thousand nine, I'm sorry, where we had four immediately after the program was implemented. We added eleven new homes that year. Part of that too is we're starting to see some new developments open up where we didn't, we haven't had those vacant lots in the last four, four, three or four years. That's all I have, just wanted to give a little brief overview of what we do and where we're at and expect some more information from us and discussion on ad hoc committee if that's a desire. We just need to get out there and try to get some support from the community to keep this program going. It feels pretty important for our city.
Scott, when somebody comes in on a building permit, does the city remind them of this program?
What?
When they, somebody comes in on a building permit. I know a guy that made an extensive improvement on his property. He's halfway done, didn't know anything about this. So I, and this has been like three or four years ago. So the thing I was wondering, does this, when somebody comes in with a building permit, do we remind them of this?
Try to, Amanda, her secretary over there is one that takes those applications. She tries to remind individuals that there, there would be, they could potentially participate in the program.
Okay. 'Cause I was trying to think, how do people get to know about it? They don't see it here. We ought to try to catch them when they come in on a building permit, so that's-
And don't we have a brochure that-
We have a brochure.
That sits on the counter?
Yeah. And runs stuff on Channel Seven. The new city's website, and I have a pretty good section on NRP as well as three sixty does now.
On commercial property, our minimum's ten thousand, what's our max?
Um, it's just kind of, it's one of them better.
I, I don't know that I know that. I don't think there is a max on-
There isn't, it's more about job creation, meeting those economic development goals.
It's just one of those tools and I think Linda had it put in a couple, two cycles ago. And it was, it's just another tool in the tool bag. But like, was TNT IRB or NRP?
What you can think about is, I forget their name, right across from the old Jefferson School Football Stadium.
Yeah.
They're doing some work, build a brand-new building way back there. Gonna, gonna demolish some of those buildings in front of Sixth Street and improve that area. They were, they were included in NRP, so for cleaning up a blighted area.
The old White Alice property.
The White Alice property, yeah.
And so it's about, again, our economic development philosophy is about filling a gap and not really about giving you stuff. It's trying to fill a gap and, and so, um-
And a lot of those economic development ones are lean more towards the five-year. I can't think of one that's a ten-year off the top of my head at all.
I don't even know if you can. I think it is five-year.
Well, there's some that have been ten-years and they, like, one that just came off recently was Joyce and Joyce's Building.
But that's in the district. It's in the ten-year district. I think if you're not in the district, the assumption is five.
Would there be any merit now to have a meeting, Herb? And I'm talking about the four entities that can do this and we're just one of the four or five. I would think you'd wanna try to get everybody on board early in that game because it's not fair to two or three of them say, "No." We say, "Yes." They build the building, they get the property tax and we don't. You know, and I'm, I'm just thinking that somehow there needs to be a conversation with all entities early in the game that says, "We feel this is important and if you don't, please explain what your thoughts are." You know what I'm saying, conversation.
No, and I absolutely agree. And I guess, I don't wanna jinx the deal, but I would not be surprised at all if you did not get all the support from all the entities. And so I'm gonna say that as a commission, you're gonna have to decide if you do it with some of them and not all of them. But I think that until we can tell them what it is, if anything, that you wanna do, we ought to wait. But I think as elected officials, as you see those other elected officials in conversations today, say, "This has been, this is vital to our construction and our housing." And, and I think the same thing's true of INC. I think all those INC members, they need to be telling those other elected officials that, that you're not getting any more kids in school if you don't build more houses. And you're not gonna get any more property tax at Butler if you don't build more structures. And in today's environment, this is what, this is helping us. But even that's not doing great. But before you made changes, the number was zero. I mean, when the housing bubble burst, it was zero in El Dorado. And it wasn't until the reaction from the commission, and I think it got four or five permits boom, right after they did it. And so you had, the risk for the developer was such that they weren't gonna build a house until something changed. And so I, I think that, I, I think if the commission thinks that they're gonna continue to do this, you need to be having those conversations today from a mile high in the air. And then as soon as you all decide what we're gonna do, if anything, then have those conversations at the, on the fine, on the particulars of the program. But, but I think absolutely, I think it, last time, did you go to Butler with me?
I did not, I was waiting for that.
When, when I went to Butler, they talked about this is gonna be the last time. But of course, that was Jackie and Jackie's not there now. And so I think, I think you're gonna need to have conversations- gonna need to have conversations and, and one size doesn't, doesn't seem to fit all in Butler County on some stuff, and this is very well maybe one of them.
I see that list of permits per year and how it really dropped off even with all the incentives we've thrown there, that hasn't been our answer. There's gotta be some other reason, cause four or five permits a year, we need to be doing better than that somehow. You know, I, I don't know what it takes to do that, maybe we need to do more, I, I don't know. But we need to be thinking about that part, I'm saying, what we've been doing hasn't been what we would hoped it would do up to this point.
I think, yeah, and I think we keep being supportive of our developers, and we're seeing Mr. Farmer open up even a second phase now, which was really encouraging to us. Mr. Chris is opening up his ninth edition.
Yeah, I mean, I think the incentives that we, we've put forward is what's gotten us today to have, you know, Chris and Farmer have these developments open. I mean, one of the challenges with building permits, as we've discussed in our housing committee meetings, is not necessarily been completely tied to the economy, a lot of it here's also been tied to the lack of building space. And so to get these developments open, which is where we're working now, like once those developments are open with the incentives that we have as a city, I think we'll see, I, I think we'll see a good influx of new building permits at that point.
I encourage you all to drive up underneath Water Tower, Mr. Farmer's first phase, the roads are in, some backfill work still needs to be done, but it's a pretty nice area. I mean, he's, he's opening up a nice area.
I'd like to ask the rest of the commission, would, would any of you be interested in raising the limit from a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
I, I'm open to anything, yeah, you know, cause I think we've gotta move. But I think just raising it to be raising it, you know, kind of, I guess, understand why and who we're hoping to attract and where they're gonna be.
Well, I, I think, I would think maybe we would consider raising it because these two new developments that are opening up, I think they're gonna be more in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range.
Well, if I remember right, you get, you get the abatement on the hundred and seventy-five thousand and you're just taxed on the above.
Correct, that is correct.
And I think when, some of our discussion in the image to come up with that particular number was not to be in the situation that Andover put themselves in, which was four hundred thousand or something like that.
Right.
I think that's what's...
That is the number.
That, that killed Andover's NRP because it was reaching a little too far.
I didn't, that's why I said two fifty.
Okay. I'm, I'm comfortable with one seventy-five, I'm not for sure that the answer to raise it way up is gonna be beneficial to us.
I mean, I think where I'm at is I, I, you know, I don't wanna make any of those types of calls until we have development space open for them to start building on. I mean, that's been the challenge, and Dave and I've had an opportunity to sit through a lot of these housing committee meetings and, and really dive, dive into the data, and there just hasn't been lots to build on, and...
There's been lots, just not suitable lots.
Not suitable lots.
Yeah.
Right. And now that we've got these developments opening, there's gonna be good, suitable lots to build on, and I think that, you know, as a development, they, they, I think, I think that that can spur itself along rather than, at this point, you know, if we're, if we're here a year from now with a bunch of lots hitting these developments still waiting to be built on, then maybe that's a discussion to have, but today, I mean, we've, we've gotta put the horse out there first to get the, get the developments open.
I think, I think as government, we as a city have probably reached out about as far as you can reach out in, in trying to help. A lot of it has to say, has to do with the economy and, and the people scared of the economy and what to do with their money and how to invest their money. So while other towns still, Andover's still building them right and left, location, 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 three major things of real estate. So I, I think we've done a great job in, at least in the time I've been here. I think we, we helped the developers with the, with the infrastructure like we have, big incentive for them to go ahead and move forward. I, I think we've taken in this, this program as about as far as you can and still stay within the, within a reasonable bounds, so you see what happened to other cities that decided to take it to the next level. So I think we've been fair and, and, and the incentives in the housing, on the housing committee, the discussion is there, it really kind of opens your eyes up to the problems that we do have in town and trying to get things done, so I think we're doing a great job. And, and private, private industry is the one that's gonna drive it. We can only give them so many tools for the toolbox.
You know, and in, in the discussions in our housing committee meetings, do this, up to one seventy-five where we're at now is, is really, I mean, and Linda talked about, talked to us about that as well, and this is kind of the sweet spot to be in. I mean, we don't, that way, we're not extending out too far, and if somebody that wants to come in and build a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, I mean, they understand the implications of doing that anyway, so, you know, that they'll be paying tax on, what's seventy-five, I'm not a math guy, it's on seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, so it's, there's still a big incentive for them to come in and build that house. So for me, I'm comfortable staying where we're at today and, and waiting for these developments to get open so that we can see how housing starts developing inside of those.
And I second that, I mean, I, I, I see where you're coming from, and I think I'm not sure raising it is gonna help our problem. And I kind of like what Bill said and David, that I think we need to see what happens with these lots right now and then possibly move from there, would be my initial thought on changing that number.
Have we had any building permits in the existing part of town? You know, existing housing where they went into lots? How, how many of those out of four, half of them? I see a few here and there.
I don't know this year, I can tell you last year probably two of those were duplexes, infill duplexes in the south part of town. So there has been a lot of infill creation, being able to use that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar rebate as well, just not new housing and new additions. This has given people the incentive to be able to buy dilapidated structure, raise it, and then build new, which is really the most bank for the city's budgets, the infrastructures are already there, you know, the roads are, the sewer and water, everything. So infills, infills is a good thing, and focusing on that.
Maybe, maybe we try to come up with a program where we pay for the house tear-down or something? I mean, somehow to incent what you're talking about, cause I totally agree about all the infrastructure's already there, try to incent the existing part of town with, in certain areas.
Well, that's why we have the ten-year in those certain areas, you know? The rest of them are getting five, if, if one of these infills is in that ten-year area, they're getting the ten-year rebate.
Okay.
And, but I will tell you that the how, the lots on Emporia, part of, we have focused a lot of our dilapidated structure purchases in the floodplain, where they're constantly being flooded, but we've done two recently, and we've already been contacted by a builder to buy them from us when they're ready to build on. And so you go from that five thousand dollar house with a hundred dollars of taxes to now a hundred thousand dollar house and the taxes that go with it. And so, well, as, as we continue to tear down homes that need to be torn down, there'll absolutely be more and more that are gonna get back built.
I think you guys have been pretty proactive on that and finding those homes and not just focus lately at least, not just focused on the floodplain, getting those areas where we can infill. I know that, I know that staff has been proactively working to, to help, help with our infill challenges here in town.
And again, public input, I mean, it's, structures are different when they're across the street from you. Even though we see them and they may not look that bad to us, when they're across the street from you and you call us and then we come and really look at it, then, then we get help. And so it's, it's those phone calls that call us out and identify those constant problems that help us do our job. And I mean, I'm thinking of the one, that one up on Topeka, that, that needed to go. Actually, a lot of, all of them.
If we tore them down, they all gotta go.
So should we maybe get the, just suggestion that the housing committee together with representatives from the entities and discuss our current plan?
Well, aren't, don't we have, don't we have a, in that group?
I, I couldn't find any literature how it was formed, so, but it had...
I thought we had Sue was on it, wasn't it?
Yeah, Sue was in it, you had Roger Nifer, right, from college, you had Lon Roberts from Butler County, and then a couple local realtors and bankers in El Dorado, he needed a job. Sounds like a good group.
I think that's a good group to have that discussion. Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for agenda item number six, new business discussion item.
So I'd like to start. Thursday night, there was a post and an article out on the, on the internet, on Facebook, the police department's Facebook page, Thursday night there was a toddler running down Sixth Street, Lieutenant Pierce with the police department got the toddler home, spent some time visiting with the parents and understood that they were having challenges getting the right kind of locks on their doors to keep the toddler in, so Lieutenant Pierce took him to Walmart, helped him pick out some locks, went home, helped him install them, install them. I think tonight, Kate News is over at police department interviewing Lieutenant Pierce. I think that's a great example of the type of, the quality of employees we have in El Dorado in general and at our police department. You know, Lieutenant Pierce took an opportunity to really understand what it means to be a part of the community and not just a law enforcement officer. So I, I, I think I'd like to just, and I wanna get some more details from you, Herb, if you can, but I wanted to express my gratitude for, to Lieutenant Pierce and also to, to Chief Zeeman for the example that they're setting over there and, and, you know, kind of how we're, how he's training his, his officers to really be a part of the community and not just out to write tickets. So I think it's a great example, and Herb, if you've got some stuff to add there.
And you know, I think we talk a lot about solving problems, that there are organizations that try to have a piece of paper that tells you how to do everything in the world. Well, you can't have a piece of paper for every situation, so we talk about solving problems and about managing by values. And so I, I think this is a great example, and the piece you left office, he paid for him. And so, cause the, the family didn't have the resources to...
That's not accurate. The, the family did pay for it.
Oh, okay. Well then, I was told wrong today. And so anyhow, so again, nowhere on the job description of a policeman is locksmith or handyman. It's about trying, in this case, keeping a child in, inside. And so, so that's what, that's what we wanted to do. And, and so when I tell, and when we do indoctrination tours with all of our employees, I routine, I tell all of them, if you see something that needs to be done and you take action to solve it, you won't get in trouble for that, even if someone decides later that that's not what we want to do. If it needs to be done, and you can solve it, solve it, and then we'll talk about it. And so this is a great example of something needed to be done, this man had the ability to do it, and he did it. And it is out, absolutely outside of normal work. It is not, that's not what we have policemen specifically hired to do, but it's kind of like, so what? These people are our customers, they had a problem that they couldn't solve, and we were there to help them, and so...
Well, he, he definitely went above and beyond, you know, like I said, it's, it's great to see all of our staff, and in this case specifically, one of the police officers as being part of, part of the community, you know, understanding that this is not just a, a citizen and I'm a police officer, but this is a neighbor, and, and I'm appreciative of that, again, across the board with staff, but in this case specifically to Lieutenant I think that's all I've got. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll, real quick, kind of throw in as far as the police department and the, and city staff as a whole, but I, in the past couple months, have noticed the police staff really doing a great job interacting with the youth. I saw Chief Zeeman several weeks ago, there was a young girl who, for whatever reason, kind of had a fear of policemen and wasn't comfortable around him, and the way he kind of spoke to her and had that conversation, I just was really proud to see how they handled those, and, and so I don't remember being young and thinking the cops were that cool, but I think they're doing a good job. Real quick, yesterday we had some family and friends up from Oklahoma, and they had, they're up for the week, and they had pointed out and said over and over how nice the community looks and, and how they're just blown away that a city this size is maintained and looks the way it does, and, you know, the smaller communities down in Oklahoma where they're at and, and that area aren't maintained and well-groomed and taken care of and appreciated. And so that was just kind of nice to hear. I mean, I take some of that for granted myself every now and then, and I know when I travel and get outside of the community, there are some towns that are a little weak, but city looks really nice and I appreciate staff doing all they do to keep up with that in the summer. I know it's hard, I know there's people that kind of have complaints about certain areas, but you can't be perfect, and I think y'all are doing a good job. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Chapin?
Received an email on flood insurance, I think probably everybody got one, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know if any of you have ever owned a house in a floodplain?
Yes.
And have you owned it in the last ten years?
I have not.
I seen in banking what it does to be...
Okay. It just really kills, especially when you're, you're in the line, but even if it did flood, your house wouldn't get wet?
Right.
And that, and that changed back, I think about twelve years ago or something, to where if it hits your property, it doesn't matter, you're gonna buy flood insurance. And I think we all know where it floods in town and where it doesn't flood, and what we've done to alleviate flooding down to Constant Creek, and I hope we've been able to get the rest of the creek kind of cleaned up or have access to it, but is there any way, or is that federal line, a line drawn in the sand that's a lot tougher than the one that Obama draws?
Yeah, the federal line's drawn in the sand, doesn't mean much.
Yeah, and when we met with the residents on Tuanda Avenue, that's one thing we did bring up is discussing that.
that's one thing we did bring up is discussing that. FEMA right now is currently going through, I don't wanna say a full remapping of our community, but they're doing work because of our levy. If y'all remember, or some of you may not, our levy is, is decertified. We, we decided not to certify that levy. So, we're talking to them about evaluating that area down in the Krupped Edition. A lot of it has to do with elevation, you know. It, it, it doesn't really matter if the line's on their property or not, it's based on the actual elevation of their home next to that flood plain, next to that flood elevation. And what's really hitting these homeowners right now is, is Congress changed the Flood Insurance Act to make homeowners pay the, what they call the actual risk, or they use some terminology like that, your actual risk. So if you have a home that's two foot below the hundred year flood plain, you're gonna be paying more than the guy that's six inches below the hundred year flood plain, where that wasn't the case in the past. Everyone paid a flat insurance raise, rate based on their value, the value of their property or their insured, insured rate. So that has significantly impacted a lot of homeowners in El Dorado.
But not as much as it's going to.
Not as much as it's going to. And when those homes change hands, when they sell, that triggers new, new levels of insurance, rate increases annually.
They're, they're, they've slowed down the phase in. So, as bad as it is, it's slowed down, but it, but the real end goal is that there's no cost to the United States of America if you live in a flood plain or floodway.
Which is-
Those costs are all borne by the people that live there or the people that have property, real property there.
Which, yeah, I doubt that that would ever be the case. I mean, with something like Katrina or Sandy, I mean, those type of events.
But probably, that's probably what's triggered it.
It, it is.
They're tired of driving checks.
Sandy is what triggered it. The improvements made on Constant Creek were, were more for drainage type improvements and, and when you look at a flood plain, it's, it's more elevations and, and the elevation of your structure next to that flood plain and where that flood water will spread out. So it is, it is something, Constant Creek, we want to evaluate, but not necessarily the improvements we did were more to help erosion and to move drainage to a different area than so much getting some of those homes out of the flood plain.
I think we all, we all know that, that drainage, for good drainage will let, not as much water back up, so thus your elevation isn't there. And, and the reason I talk about that is that I have a house close in that particular area that, that I bought in ninety something. And I was fine and then I refinanced it and, boy, I had to buy flood insurance. Well, at that time, if, if I could prove my floor was above that line, I, I didn't have to buy it. So luckily, I was three inches above the line. And then, later on, when the laws changed, boom, I had to get flood insurance, it didn't matter. I had a loan, that was it. Paid it. And I paid it. And then finally, I got to the point where it was just, I owed a little bit on the house, I just paid it off so I could get rid of that expense. And it was minute compared to what is coming down the pipe.
It is. But you can still prove that you're above it.
Right.
But is this zone in, isn't it called in the, where they don't have a real line? They just say, we think it's a-
No, this, everything in El Dorado is a Zone A, so it's been studied, it's-
Well, wasn't out in-
Well, the business park was a little different, is that what?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, where, where we had to prove.
Yeah.
That's above and once we did, it was fine.
Right. Those established areas have been studied and elevations have been taken of the creeks and the abutting land. We do think there would be some room improvement for down in that area though, we believe.
Well, I hope so, just for everybody in that area, because it is, to get a loan on it.
It's unfortunate, 'cause then they have to hire a surveyor, that costs money and even if they know they're out, they have to go through paperwork with the city, paperwork through FEMA and then still try to prove to their bank. And really, in 2008, the old flood maps just really were line drawings with, the roads were shown as lines and just shaded areas drawn on those. And in 2008, when they started putting aerial photography behind those maps and that's when the, the people that the banks used to look at that were able to zoom in on your actual house and say, oh, the line's touching your house, you're in the flood plain, which maybe necessarily isn't the fact if, if you have an elevation certificate and can prove it, but you do have to do some work.
That's all I got, I just wanted to kinda get that out in a public arena so that some information is there for them to use.
Yeah, and if anyone has questions about flood insurance or elevation issues or comments, feel free to give us a call in the engineering department.
Take them all the time?
Yeah, all the time and, and help people determine. We can't, we can't say, yes, you're in or out, we can have a good idea and we can really sit down to show you, but that's up to you hiring a private surveyor to go out and certify that elevation.
But I do think we are gonna have the maps on our website.
Yep.
So that if you're just curious, we're putting those out there.
Herb, I apologize for not giving you a heads up, but I got a call just as I was getting ready to leave the house tonight. Where are we with our non breed specific antidote orders? Have we, are we any closer to bringing something to us to look at? Or, I know there's been, been some research done on that.
I thought we brought those examples back, sent them to you and we're kinda waiting on you, I think.
Okay.
So if you want legislation, that I-
Herb, we're waiting on, we were waiting on the vet, the veterinarians' response.
I thought there was something we were waiting for.
And I think we-
Jack, we have the comparables.
I think we received a couple, I, I don't know where we're at yet with that yet, but we've received a few, yeah.
With our local vet, so if you local, any local veterinarians are watching this, get those surveys in, please.
Okay.
And that's all I've got.
Didn't have the flood deal on my list today, but I'm sure with you on, on that. And that's a big issue that concerns me for the future down through there because it's gonna affect the value of those homes. And I have thought and thought on that. I know that the cost of that insurance with the government getting out of that and it's gonna go private, it's gonna go up and up. I mean, it's, it's really gonna get expensive. And I didn't know if there's any way that, that a person, you know, as far as lobbying Congress to grandfather what we're doing, could we have, could we build a dike down? Didn't Augusta build a dike or did some dike work that took a bunch of properties out of the flood plain? And, and I'm saying if we got a grant or something that would take and, you know, where we had to buy two or three houses, but we took 20 houses out of the flood plain, that would be good long-term for the city, I don't know. I'm, I'm saying, we might need to think outside the box somehow because that's gonna be an issue that valuation's gonna go down tremendously down that area.
Well, and I know, since I've been here, we haven't looked at this, but we did look at our levy east of here and the total value of all the property was less than the cost of the levy, if I remember.
That's a big number to certify.
And so, so we looked at it and, and of course, the biggest loser is the city of El Dorado.
Yeah.
The big ticket items are owned by the city and, and the commission just, and, and I think staff said it's just not worth the certifying that levy.
I was, El Dorado's kinda fortunate. Years ago, Mr. Martindale from the stories I heard, he used to go around and had his own ordinance in the city code prior to flood insurance and said he could determine where someone could build a house. And so El Dorado's pretty fortunate, we have a limited number of homes in the flood plain, but we do have some effect. If someone like Augusta, without their levy system, their whole town would be in the flood plain. And El Dorado's fortunate the way they've developed and, and the area, you talk about how that developed out in the county and it wasn't in the city. Wouldn't necessarily have been allowed, you know, with the rules we had, but, yeah, the cost of building a levy and, and trying to tie that back in without spreading water back all over another developed area would be pretty difficult. And there are, there are times that FEMA does offer grants for buyouts. So that's something, maybe we could look a little bit and we've, we've tried in the past to look at that for properties, dilapidated properties. But really, FEMA gave us a stack of pamphlets to hand out to explain this new change that Congress made. And it really gave the homeowners three options and it was, and I couldn't believe they hand, they gave us, one of us handed us out, it was, raise your house. You know, raise your house, literally, raise your house, tear it down and, and relocate, so.
Okay. But I think, I mean, I guess we could find out who voted for this and come back and report who thought this was a good idea. If any of our reps thought it was a good idea.
It is an election year.
It is an election year.
It'd be kinda interesting.
We'll do that.
Okay, a couple of quick things. That Aaron's Building out on West Central needs mowed. He probably mowed it today, 'cause I come in the other way, but it's nothing that's really catching me, my eye. A street we work, rework on those cement streets like Douglas and Tuanda. We talked about doing them this summer at one time. Are we still gonna work on that? Okay, good. And then on West Cave Springs and South Atchison, there are some cement streets down in there. Are those still on the line, Scott, for this summer?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make-
And I guess, and I was thinking of those on your first one, what was your first one again?
My first is actually Douglas and Tuanda.
Douglas and Tuanda.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but Cave Springs and Atchison, that, that'll be-
I know, those are. And that intersection, I had to plan on tearing that out. I'll check on that, Mayor, I haven't talked about that in a while.
Yeah. I mean, if you go look at that, that should be done, in my opinion, so. I was at a funeral in Sunset Cemetery this week and I just wanted to make comment of how nice the cemetery looked. We're gonna work on the roads next month, is my understanding. But I'm telling you, with the way they had it mowed around the stones and stuff, I thought it looked very nice and, you know, for the middle of January, you know, I'm just saying thank you to staff on that. One thing I'd like to see, grass on the lot on South Main.
Where the parking lot's going?
Yeah.
I just never said tonight, too.
Yeah, and they need to go mow that.
I know. The owner of that has been ill.
Yeah.
And so, I, I noticed that it needs to be mowed, but I'm, I'm gonna offer that as maybe the problem. But Scott, would you say something to him? 'Cause doesn't he own that with, isn't it a combination?
Yeah, and I know that since some of the illness, they had a meeting yesterday to talk about several things and I'm sure that property was probably before that.
I was curious about, I didn't know why the project quit working.
I don't know.
Yeah. Would you ask Scott?
Okay. Johnson grass, did we ever get a hold of the county, did they say anything about that?
I don't remember what the outcome of that was.
There's a bunch of Johnson grass around.
But there's been a bunch of it sprayed.
Has there?
Okay. But I'm not, but your question specifically, I don't remember what I was told about that, I'm sorry.
I was thinking you was gonna visit, the county's responsible for that, is my understanding. It's pernicious weed and we are in the county and we was gonna call them and, point, point out some deals and they should pay for it hopefully, is what I'm hoping for. Did we ever visit with Walmart about the, the issue out on West Central?
Haven't got to that yet, but Chief and I, Chief Zeeman and I have talked and we're planning on it, so, just haven't had a chance to.
Visit to Walmart, okay. Okay, one thing to have, if, if I could, I'd sure like to have the Q sit numbers on those late debt investments, there's seven of them. I could have a Q sit number on that and then also like a copy of the purchase receipts when the securities were purchased sometime when you get done. And that's everything I've got. Okay, we're ready for Agenda Item Number Seven, City Managers Report.
Uh huh, two things that I've been asked about in the past that I have people here to talk about. And the first one is, there was a petition submitted in the winter and then resubmitted, got some more signatures on it and submitted again, I think, a week or two ago. And so, we took it back to, the first time we got it, it went to Prairie Trails Advisory, took it back to them again, they wanted to visit that again. And Jason and Jason are here to talk about the items requested on the petition, what the advisory thinks about them and what we think about them. And I also handed out, besides the cost to mow, you have that information. Currently, we don't irrigate those portions of the golf course, so you also see what it would cost if we're gonna mow it and don't irrigate it, you're gonna be hitting balls, you'll find them, 'cause there will be nothing there but dirt about now. And so, you also see the cost to improve the irrigation system. And without that, I'm gonna have to do Jason's.
Um, Jason Reisling, nine thirty eight, West Third. You guys have those costs, I mean, it's astronomical to do that. That grass on the golf course does provide a buffer zone during heavy rains. Keeps a lot of that stuff running out down the storm drains and doing those things. It also, you know, provides a lot of, gives some character to our golf course. So I'm here for questions, whatever you guys.
So this is for, and forgive me, 'cause I saw that petition briefly for the first time, the last meeting. So this is for what the petition requested?
What, or I mean-
The petition requested-
The petition basically requested to mow all the native grass at Prairie Trails, which consists of approximately 20 acres, down to four inches or less.
Okay.
Then it also mentions narrowing of the fairways and it mentioned the rough adjoining the fairways, be mowed half the present height.
Two things, just real quick. I don't golf, wish I did. I have no say, you know, as long as it's maintained and, and I don't know much about the petition or even who submitted it, but I, I have been contacted by several folks who golf, saying there was some confusion with the petition. They maybe were, they weren't fully understanding of what they were signing or they were signing something that, I, I, I don't know. So I think there was some confusion on that end. And then I guess I think with how y'all have it, I mean, if you don't golf well, shouldn't there be some kind of consequence for not golfing well? I mean, if you, if, I mean, if you, I mean, I don't, again, I don't golf, so I don't, but it sounds like it would kind of-
It's a game of Risk reward.
Yeah.
You hit, hit it down the middle of the fairway where it's mowed at, or mowed fairways at five eighths of an inch.
Well, the reward is for me, when I don't hit in the fairway, I get to go on an adventure.
That's true.
Yeah.
Anyways, I just wanted to mention that I had several people contact me about the petition just saying they weren't necessarily sure about what they had signed. They weren't accusing anyone of anything, but there might have been some confusion. And I heard that multiple times, so that's-
Has the Prairie Trails Advisory Board taken this up and made any kind of recommendation?
They actually met tonight.
Okay.
Before this meeting and their recommendation was continue as is, don't change anything.
Okay.
So.
And then the narrowing the fairways, that was alleged, do you think we really did that?
We did not.
How wide is a fairway today?
Ours are twenty-five dogs.
Okay. Okay.
So, that's how far the irrigation head sprays, is, I mean, you may, you know, wind, of course, a little bit farther, but on average, that's how wide, that's why the fairway is wide though.
And is that normal, is that a normal width?
Yes. I contacted several golf courses in the area, I got, everyone's said the fairways are as wide as our irrigation. I got twenty yards, I got twenty-five yards, I got thirty yards, the most I got, I think, was thirty-five. But that's where the irrigation is in line with what they're doing.
So, you can keep what they're playing on green?
Right, and alive.
So, if, if the native grass was mowed to four inches, and it wasn't irrigated, did die?
Yes.
For example, that is our driving range that we just built this first of this year. If you guys go out on the driving range, like, on the road or ball plan, that's just, that's an efficiency from just the ball picker. I mean, there's no car traffic going on that, there's no play, like, per se, and it's, I mean, it's dirt.
And it's non-irrigated?
Correct.
Well, and the dog leg that we talked about today, what holds that, on country club?
Seven.
Seven. I mean, if, when I hit a ball, when I am sure that my drive is gonna take me to the green, and it takes me about halfway there in the dirt, I'm hitting on the dirt. Which is, maybe now, it's dirt.
You drove the green on seven?
No, I think I can.
No, no.
I'm sure I'm gonna reach.
One thing, too, that I was, I was curious for this number, too, so I spoke with Mike today, and we've had a lot of great comments about the golf course, especially from people out of town. Golf course is involved in Kansas Cup, and the folks that come over and play, and I really enjoy it. Our public play rounds, public paid rounds, is up twelve point eight percent today over last year. So.
That's impressive.
They're not keeping people away.
That's impressive.
So, they like the long grass?
Yep.
Nick, Nick plays the long grass.
They like the green grass, they like the green grass.
If they like ways, it's been maintained. So, I was excited to see that between this time, this year versus last year, we're up twelve point eight percent, just on public play. Member rounds are up six point seven percent. And I don't anticipate member rounds fluctuating a whole lot unless we get an influx of membership.
That twelve point eight's impressive.
So, yep, I was excited about that. So, and the parking lots, I told Mike today, I didn't know the numbers, but you can tell the parking lot's busy all the time, there's always cars.
Well, if we were gonna spend any kind of money like this per year, I'd rather see it on asphalt entering into the golf course.
And I think of their list, this, this would be low down on the list of things you think the course needs. If you could have everything you wanted today, this isn't even on the list. But there's a lot on the list.
There's a lot.
That unfortunately, you haven't got asked City Manager, yet alone a commissioner.
We're working on it.
Well, I've noticed a big uptick in the number of players out there, and the course looks great, by the way. Mike, your pro shop staff is friendly as always, and they're, they're doing a great job this year, so, not that they didn't last year, but I've actually got to play a few times this year, so it's been nice.
Thank you.
But the course does look great, and, and I think, I think that to spend this kind of money to mow the grass down and make it a giant piece of dirt out there is just not a good investment for the community.
Be cheaper to give balls away for people who didn't like.
You give a lot of balls away for this, this amount of money.
That's a good idea, though.
Yeah, that's my advantage. When I do hit it in the tall grass, I go out to find my ball, and I come back with three others, so.
I always come out ahead.
Well, the rain has helped this year, and it does look nice out there, fellas.
Yeah.
So, like I was saying, a suggestion I might have, because it is a municipal course, maybe the committee this fall sometime could just have an open meeting. You know, where people can come in and have a conversation about that. That would help them with some input, I would think, and it's all about communication, so. That would be my only suggestion, is that somehow there'd be a public meeting to anybody in town that wants to come out and visit about it, and talk the pros and cons, we still live in America, and that's where it needs to start at.
Do you have any members of the advisory board that aren't members of Prairie Trails?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you don't right now, no, you've got to hope.
Probably Brad.
Is there a different word than member? Because this is a country club.
Pass holder.
Pass holder.
That's, we need to get in the habit of that.
Pass holder.
Yeah.
I know, to your point, Mayor, that several of the advisory board members spoke to different people, because they own the petition as well.
Okay.
Got kind of the same comments Chase got. So, and I received those comments as well. I talked to a lot of people, and just asked their opinion and why they signed it, and got a lot of great feedback. And we've changed some things since that time, but I, too, got the same comment.
Did you mow back some?
I have.
For Friday evening, I mean, it did, there was, or Sunday, you know, there was a difference, I thought, so.
We've, we've changed some areas, done a few things different.
Yeah.
One thing that's really helped this year, I'm really proud of, is we got a second rough mower this year, and we're able to mow the whole course in a day and a half. That's never happened, so that's been wonderful, so yes, thank you for that, so we are keeping it, keeping it mowed down.
Great numbers on attendance, so that's, and that's only because of you guys, so, and your staff, so.
Thank you.
Good job, keep up the good work.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. The next thing, and I don't know if we're gonna get everything you wanted to know yet, but Kurt's here to give you an update on the wind turbine. And if we don't, if we don't answer what you want to say, then maybe we'll get it next time.
Kurt Bookout here, Director of Public Utilities, and happy to be here for you to report good news about the wind turbine. In June, we passed the one million kilowatt hours produced mark. We're actually about one point one million right now. Since the cone bearing repair that we did back and completed on May third, from May third to today, with the exception of one week shutdown for a lightning strike repair. So, we're about two months, two months and a week, we produced two hundred ninety-one thousand sixty-four kilowatt hours. To put that to perspective, over the past one and a half years, we averaged about forty thousand kilowatt hours per month. Now, we're averaging about a hundred forty-three kilowatt hour, a hundred forty-three thousand kilowatt hours per month, and so. Dramatic increase in production, they did some precision alignments, they did some things to bring the turbine into what we think is more in spec with what the plans were and not what we received when we got it. So, it's operating much better, and you probably all noticed that most of the time, it's consistently running now, and so, it's been, been very nice. The, kind of the status on, on expense and revenues, the total project cost was about two point three million. Offsetting grants that we received was about one point three million, and so, city money's about a million dollars. To date, since the turbine was erected, our expenses are around three hundred fifty-four thousand. Our income is around two hundred ninety-eight thousand, so we're about fifty-six, fifty-five thousand negative. However, at this rate of production, we're gaining about twelve thousand dollars a month. And so, we have had to spend some money, we spent about a hundred forty thousand this year, out of this year's budget, to get the turbine back on track and running correctly. And the reward has been that it has been running well, so we're optimistic that, that with it running right, we're gonna reach that payoff.
So, it should, barring any unforeseen thing, lightning strike or anything, maybe here in about another four and a half, five months, then we ought to be in the lot.
Yes, yep.
Start, start working on the million.
Starting to work on the million.
Start, you're working on the million, yeah. And at about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand a year, we're probably six, seven years away from payoff, and so entirely within the scope of what we thought we were getting into. In addition, we, we are going to continue to pursue the engineer that brought this turbine to us, we're gonna continue to pursue that. There is an issue with net metering with Westar, that now that we're back in production, we feel good that that might actually have a payoff if it would be at Westar. I'm not, not hopeful that Westar's going to honor what they told us, but we're gonna, we're gonna continue to pursue that, too. So, things are, things were looking up, and.
I, I didn't have, it wasn't on the agenda, so I wasn't prepared, you know, I've, I've got a file at home, and I had some questions, and I'd really, it'd be nice if this was an agenda item at some point, but. Well, we, we, I only put it on there because David asked the question on new business, and then here a while back, and, and so.
And I'd emailed in a question about the.
So, that's why I didn't make it an agenda item, because I didn't think it was gonna be the formal of the deal, but. Okay, well, I asked the question.
If you want to give me a list of those questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and then respond to all of them with the answer.
Yeah. Do you, what's the difference between a two-blade and a three-blade?
Two-blade and three-blade?
Yeah, how many two-blades?
One, one blade.
No, but I'm, when you look around, is a two-blade normal, or a three-blade normal?
Three-blade is normal.
Okay.
Nordic, Nordic, a company that went out of business, but Nordic went out of business not because they had a two-blade versus a three-blade. Nordic went out of business because when they shut down their company in Pocatello, Idaho, and got ready to move to Kansas City, the federal government canceled their twenty-two, twenty-three million dollar loan that they were gonna use to relocate. There are pros and cons. I have been told now by this maintenance company that takes care of all of the Nordic turbines that are still in existence. They take care of those, but they also take care of a lot of three-blade. They tell me that the, the three-blade turbines have less vibration issues. You're spreading that wind out a little bit more, balancing it isn't as critical, and so, that's one of the differences. The advantage of the two-blade is lower capital cost. With the three-blade, you have, actually have to put the nacelle, which is the big gear box that goes on top, you have to install that, and then you have to install each blade using a crane two hundred and fifty feet in the air. With the two-blade, they actually put the blades on, on the ground, and left the whole assembly, so it greatly simplifies construction, lowers the cost of the turbine. There are some innovations that Nordic came up with on, I don't know the terminology, but basically, the shock absorbers that absorb some of the shock of the blade going around, and so. I don't think Nordic had a bad product, I think had they been around to, to help us fine tune this machine, we wouldn't, wouldn't have had the problems that we had.
And then, and you weren't here, Mayor, but we asked the question, I mean, we wanted GE, we wanted Siemens, we see them, we know them. This, Westar, and rightly so, didn't want us, didn't want us to be in the power business particularly, so they wanted it to be sized appropriately. This was the only turbine that was sized, that we could buy, that met the grant requirements, and met what Westar wanted, and so. So, you're saying the size that we have out there meets what Westar?
Yeah, they, they wanted the.
They wanted it smaller.
They actually wanted it a little smaller, but they will, you can't oversize it, because they want your production to equal your demand, and so, however much energy we need, that's how much they want us to produce. They wouldn't, didn't want us producing, for instance, had we, had we been able to get a two megawatt or a one point eight megawatt, we could have gone with a GE, a Siemens, a Vestas, a big, one of the big name turbines, but Westar wouldn't allow that. They're in a connect agreement required, they said one megawatt's the max that we can get. It had to be American-made, too. Now, there, there were other American-made turbines, but not at the one megawatt size. Those big three-blades are, you know, the type that you see out at the Beaumont Farm or on I seventy. Those are, those are bigger, that some of them are American-made, but they exceeded the capacity of what Westar was willing to allow.
As far as metering, what we use out at the, at the plant out there, there's a meter for that, that Westar reads and we pay on, is that true?
Right, there's a, there is a meter, and it's a, I believe it's a bidirectional meter, and so when we're, when we're producing, we're usually producing more power than what we're using, and so, that meter keeps track of power that goes onto their system. But then, when the wind's not blowing, it's metering power that's, that's coming into the plant, too.
Okay.
So, we get on our, on our statement every month, we can see how much power went to them and how much power we used.
There, there's not two meters out there, one meter that shows what we're getting, and one meter that, of what they're.
My understanding is it's one bidirectional meter.
Okay. What, what year did this come on? How long ago? Two, three years ago?
The ribbon cutting was October of two thousand and twelve. And then shortly after that, we had the tip failure, and then it didn't run, the tip didn't get fixed until April. And then we had another lightning strike in June, I believe, we were out a couple, several months for that. And so, yeah, it's been a rocky road.
So, like in two thousand thirteen, how much did we sell to Westar? Wouldn't that be on a bill somewhere that shows total?
In two thousand thirteen?
Yeah, but we actually sold to Westar. And I'm talking about not what we paid, because that's a different item, what did we, what did we sell to them?
I couldn't tell you that right off the top of my head, now I have it in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Okay.
Wouldn't watch.
Yeah, I would say it's a small number.
It's, yeah, it's gonna be a small number, because again, we hadn't really refused as much.
And it, and it was all, seems to have been centered on this balancing that we just got done. We never had the runtime, ever, we've never went this long with a run, I don't think.
No.
It was usually one week in a row.
Right, and, and it's not.
With turnoff in between the one week, and then something big.
The key word is consistent, because even back when it was running, we had constant vibration faults. We, we don't have vibration faults.
It would shut itself.
Yeah, it would shut itself down, and we have to reset it, so we would have those very frequently, and, and we're beginning to think that was normal. There were, the other Nordic turbines were having that, since this precision balancing and the replacement of the cone bearing, we've had maybe a couple, and two and two, over, just over two months, vibration, and they were actually a different kind of vibration, and they were reset. We've had a few communication failure, where something just blips out, just like your computer, and we reset it, but very few, very few shutdowns. And that's, that's really made a huge difference, because every time it shuts down, and you gotta restart it, if it happens. you gotta restart it, um, if it happened in the middle of the night or something, you'd maybe wait until the next morning, you'd lost production, so it's, and it's not, it's evident to everybody when you, I mean, when you see it out there and it's a windy day, it's consistently running.
Do, do we sell to Westar the same price that we, uh, pay them?
No, and that's the, that's the rub, that's the issue with Westar is, uh, true net metering is, um, we buy for each cents a kilowatt, and then that, that is subtracted off our ability, cents a kilowatt, really at 2.9 cents a kilowatt.
What's the threshold, 200,000? 200,000?
It's required 200 K or less.
200, yeah, 200 KW. If you have a 200, and we have a thousand KW, so if you have a small wind turbine, a 200 KW, which is not an industrial, commercial duty wind turbine, then you can net meter, and, and Westar knows that, and they're safe with that, because, you know, they're, they're just, most people don't have the small wind turbines. But if you have a 200 KW wind turbine, they will allow net metering. They can allow net metering on ours, and, uh, they just won't.
And there's, there's a disagreement between what, how we read the contract, how KCC reads the contract, and how Westar reads it, and that's the discussion item that we're having with them now. As far as looking at fixed cost, Kirk, on what it costs for insurance, employee supervision, I guess, is there a Colorado firm that monitors that?
Mm-hmm.
What are they, what are they charged this month?
They don't charge by the month, they charge when they come out. Um, normal maintenance is gonna be, I think, around 20,000 a year, and I don't know, do you remember what insurance is to have with them? It was, it was less than I thought it was gonna be.
Do they pay for lightning strikes?
They did pay on the light, the first lightning strike, there was enough damage that, that they paid, I think they paid us like $26,000 on the, maybe $28,000 on the first lightning strike, because there was actually a hole blown in the blade. This last lightning strike that occurred in May, it was just a little board that we replaced, and, and it was like $1,200 or something. It was, it was pretty quick and easy.
Yeah.
And so it does have, it has, if you look on the, you see these brushed copper, um, nodes on the blades and on the hub, and it's got all kinds of lightning nodes that, that go down to big cables that go all the way down into the foundation, so it has lightning, uh, rods or protectors in it. But again, it's 250 feet in the air, and so, um, it's, it's meant to minimize the effect of a lightning strike, but lightning's still gonna strike it and occasionally, uh, blow something out, and if it does, and that happens in the big wind farms, they have guys that run around doing this kind of maintenance all the time.
That million dollars doesn't include the $840,000 forgivable loan, right, does it? So really?
Yeah, the, the, the KDHE forgivable portion of the loan, um, that's part of the 1.3 million in grant money, so that's.
So we'll be down to half million?
No, that's part of the, so 1.3 million, including the KDHE forgivable loan, uh, off of the 2.3, so about a million left.
Okay.
That's city, city money.
Okay, now on this forgivable loan, what do we have to do to get it forgiven?
Oh, it's already.
They've already forgiven?
Yeah, it's already done. It's, that, that portion has been subtracted off of our.
Was that because we had to complete the job or something? Why, why did they make it a forgivable loan? Why didn't they just give it a grant?
Because it's through the, the Kansas Revolving Loan Fund.
Yeah.
And that's just the way that they do it. They, they, they loan you the money, and then they forgive a portion of it based on, on this, it was green technology, installed a wastewater plant, and so it was the first time they'd ever, I think may, this may be the largest forgivable loan they've done, but this is the first time that, that any renewable energy has been placed at a wastewater treatment plant in Kansas. So they were, they're actually pretty excited about, uh, then we had another $53,000 of grant money in addition to that, that they, um, paid for the environmental impact study, um, early on in the project.
Any other questions, guys?
Just keep spinning and cranking out that energy. It's been good to see you, Yellen.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt. That's all I had, Mayor. And I don't, I don't think I need much time, and so five or 10 minutes is really all the time I need, and because a couple of the topics have been changed since I've last communicated. So if you give me 10 to be saved.
Do 10.
I can't see it taking much more than that. Is any of this about water? It is about water. It's only about water. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the City Commission Room at 9:05 PM.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Motion carries 4 to 1. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back from executive session. Uh, we don't have any motions to make that I'm aware of.
We got one.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, aye love. Thank you.